Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. All right, we are going to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And if we have our Deep friends here, you guys want to lead us? We'd be very excited for that. All right, that was great, thank you. Before we move on to the approval minutes, we do have a change to the agenda. So I will, or we will need to make a change. So can I have a motion to add to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add Pinkerton graduation announcement to Item 1C.
First by David.
Second.
Second by Kearney. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. All right, with that, we will move on to the approval of some minutes. We have our April 22 workshop minutes.
Motion to approve.
I get a motion to approve from Kearney. Second by Jason. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes 7-0. We also have the non-public meetings from May 9. Do I have a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
First by Michael Thiel. Second by Jason. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And we also have the public minutes from May 9. Do we have a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve.
First by Kearney. Second by Michael. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right, with that, we will introduce the team from Deep. Austin, if you want to... Oh wait, yeah, that's sorry. Geez, I already forgot. We will introduce the three young ladies from Pinkerton who are class officers, who I'm assuming are graduating coming up. So they're going to give a quick announcement and then we move on to Deep. Sorry.
Hi, everyo... Hello? It's on, okay. Hi, everyone. We are senior class officers from Pinkerton Academy. We are here today to announce our graduation. We will be having our graduation on June 9 at Memorial Field, which is the football field at Pinkerton, at 6:00 PM. We are here to hand out invitations to the school board members and to everyone sitting here. You are all invited if you would like to come.
Weren't you going to sing?
Oh, yes. I can share a few things about myself if you would like. I am the class treasurer. I'm also involved in a few other activities, organizations at Pinkerton. I am the treasurer of National Honor Society. I'm also involved in two varsity sports, varsity swimming and varsity tennis. And, yes, so...
And where'd you go to school?
I went to West Running Brook, so here. So this is a nice little reunion for me to be back here, which is really cool.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brooke. I'm my class secretary. I'm also a member of class office. I also do some sports. I play field hockey. I run indoor and outdoor track. And I'm a member of National Honor Society.
My name is Riley. I'm the class fundraising coordinator. Sorry, I have a lot of positions for different things, so I had to remember which one. I'm the Science Honor Society Communications Coordinator and then the National Honor Society President. I'm the Varsity Swim Captain and I'm also on varsity track.
Excellent. Excellent. Well, congratulations. Thank you for stopping by. Hopefully, we, most of, hopefully, some of us will be able to make it. Thank you for the invitation and best of luck on your future endeavors. And, yeah, it's always great to see Derry students coming back here and we get to celebrate them as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
All right, I'll pass it over to Austin to introduce our friends from Deep.
Yes, my job will be to introduce Ms. Janine Metro, who is the coordinator of the Deep program. And I will tell everybody to give her a great round of applause and we'll turn it over to her.
All right, can you hear me? I know I'm soft spoken, Cliff, so give me the thumbs up if you can hear me. My name's Janine Metro. I'm the program coordinator at the Derry Early Education Program. Thank you for inviting us tonight to join your meeting. Before our teachers and students come up, we'd like to take a moment to honor our volunteer, Ms. Jess Barlow. So a little backstory about Jess. She's been with Deep for a long time. She was actually a student at Deep in, what, 1998? Yeah? And then came back through one of her courses at Pinkerton Academy to work and then reconnected and was my volunteer in 2017 through 2019. And she's been with us ever since. So Jess, thank you for all you do. You show up every day with a smile and enthusiasm. Nobody has more Deep school spirit than you. Yeah? Thank you for helping, being an extra Santa hands for the teachers, tying shoes, opening snacks, packing folders, zipping backpacks, just everything you do just to give our little ones some extra love and attention. So we hope you stay with us for many years to come and we really love having you as our Deep teacher. So Ms. Jess actually prepared some words, so she would like to share some of her thoughts, if that's okay.
I was going to say, hi, my name's Ms. Jess, but you know. Deep is a very accommodating for all staff and students. They are able to adapt for everyone. It is a true blessing and an honor to work with the kids and the teachers. It is like a warm, loving family at Deep. Open arms and no judgment. I went to Deep when I was little and found it a great privilege to be able to work here, give back. I believe it is my purpose to spread joy and thank you.
Certificate of Appreciation, Volunteers in Education, Jessica Barlow, a valued service at the Derry Early Education Program. Congratulations.
All right, so now for our presentation. I'm not doing it this year. Our teachers are going to come up, so I'd like to introduce them. Ms. Melissa Nickerson. Mrs. Christine Arbor. Mrs. Lauren Connors. And Mrs. Patricia Pantalone. All right, Deapers, do you want to come up? Come up and stand here and then we can have you say what your name is. I'm going to ask you what your name is and then you can tell the friends in the microphone. Okay? Shh. Oh, yeah, I know. Talking on the microphone is a highlight and we've been very excited about this. So, all right, tell all of our friends up there, what is your name?
Elizabeth.
Maggie.
Mason.
Logan.
Carson.
Asha.
Ellie.
Abby.
Avery.
Phoenix.
Aiden.
Noah.
Samantha.
Emmy.
Mommy.
Aiden.
And Aiden. All right. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Nickerson.
Hi, everyone. I'm Melissa Nickerson, one of the Deep teachers. And one of the things we wanted to share with you tonight is we got a grant last year from 21st Century. It's scholastic news, but it's adapted to the preschool population. So it's called My Big World. It has an online component that you can see up on the smartboard. Mr. Dancy, I know it's called a Promethean board, but that's so hard to say at preschool. We just call it a smartboard. So we were hoping to pair a student with each of you so you can kind of follow along as we do one of these. So if that's okay, I'm going to kind of have Mrs. Metro kind of lead them around. You're welcome to slide over in your chair to share. That's something we work really hard on in preschool or they can just stand right next to you. You guys can share. Okay.
Do you want to sit in the seat?
Oh, you want to sit? What did you say? Say thank you.
That's right. What was your name again? Aiden. Aiden, all right. Ooh, Aiden, and who else? Who's it? Noah. You guys want to share? You want to scoot over so your buddy can, so Noah can sit up on here?
Hello.
So the first thing we let the kiddos do is explore the magazine. So you guys will feel free to open it up and explore what's on the inside, on the back, on the front cover. I'm going to give you about a minute to get that done and then we're going to go back to the front cover with the big lemon shark. All right, friends, I need you to close your magazine and put your finger on the big lemon shark on the front. It says, "This is a baby shark. It's called a lemon shark. What do you think it will do, do, do today?" I need you to open up your magazine and put your finger on the pink number one. The baby lemon shark swim, swim around. Do, 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 do. All right, now put your finger on the yellow number two. Then the baby shark hides from larger sharks. Hide away. Now take your finger and put it on the purple number three. Next, the baby lemon shark hunts with a friend. Let's go hunt. All right, get your finger ready and find the blue number four. Look, the baby lemon shark finds a blue crab to eat. Eat the crab. All right, put your finger on the green number five. Lemon, the lemon shark had a long day. Take a break. Oh, he looks tired. All right, now put your finger on Clifford, the big red dog. And it says, "Why is it called a lemon shark?" Would anyone like to raise a quiet hand and tell me why they think it's called a lemon shark? Ooh, I'm looking around.
Because it's yellow.
Oh, I heard it. Because it's yellow. You're so right. Nice job. All right, you can close your magazine and I want your attention up here on the smartboard. I'm going to call on some friends to come up and we are going to play a game. So it says, "Click me to hear the letter sound." So we need to match the letter we hear the shark say. A. Phoenix, would you like to come up and find A? Here we go. Let me see if I can push this down. There we go. All right, let's see if you find a turtle with an A on it. Get it? Yeah, good job, Phoenix. All right. Great work. All right, let's do another one. Who would like a turn? Come on up. Ready? Ooh, we're looking for K. Yeah, nice job. All right, raise your hand and we'll do a few more turns. Aiden Silveira, come on up. Come on up, buddy. Ready? P. Do you see a P? Yeah, nice work, Aiden. Anyone else want to turn? Ooh, come on up, sweetheart. Samantha. You're looking for letter S. S. Let's see if we can find it. Nice job. All right. Anyone else want to turn? Ooh, come on up. Come on up, Abby. All right, let's see what letter you're looking for.
T.
Ooh, T. Oh, it might come back again, though. You have to keep looking. Great job. And then it plays a little song for us. Do we have time to give everybody a turn, school board? Okay, perfect. Raise your hand if you had not had a turn yet. Logan, come on up. Ooh, T again. I don't know. Oh, let's click play again. Sorry. Let's see if A comes by. Good job. Yeah, A is in your name. You're right. So I'm sure some of you can wonder why the tennis ball is on here because if we just use the pointer, this would be cracked. Ooh, let's, oh, come on up. K. Oh, I see it. Good job, buddy. All right. Who has not had a turn? Oh, come on up, Samantha. P.
It's the winner of the day.
P says, puh, puh. I see it. Yeah. Nice job. Ready? We're looking for S. Good job. Oh, we're looking for that T again. That's a popular letter today. Nice job. Oh, hold on, Avery, we got to get through the song. Ready? You got to get ready when it says play again right there, okay? All right, Avery, can you tap play again down the bottom? Ooh, A for you, Avery. That's right. Nice job, Avery. All right, do you want to go sit with mommy? Hi, Noah. K for kite. Yeah. Good job, Noah. Do you want to go sit with mama? Come on up, buddy. Oh, that P again. Wow, that was fast. Nice job. Hi. Ready? S. Yeah, nice job. Is that everyone? Oh, come on, oh, we got some more over here. Okay. T again. Nice job. High five. That was awesome. Oh, we got to listen to the song again. That was a quick round.
Good job, everybody. Good job. Good. Good, 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 good. Good is right. Everybody be good.
A, can you find A?
I wonder what's he gonna pick?
Yeah, good job, ladies.
He did it. He did it. He did it.
Well, thank you so much for letting us come out and present. This is a really, really great thing to have in the classroom. We really love it. Our grant is for two years, so after that, we might need to get a little bit of funding for that to come back into the classroom. But thank you for having us. We really loved coming out tonight.
Hi, Mom. Hey. I know, everybody. Good job. Good job.
Good job. High five. Great, thanks for coming by. This is my favorite part. Bye. See you, Noah. Bye, Aiden. I like your shirt, buddy. I like, I like this whole guy's outfit.
All right, this is the part of the meeting where we ask the administration to notify, or recognize their letters as well, so... Well, thank you to Deep coming by. That was fantastic. I have to say, Aiden, Aiden, I like your shirt. Great job. We'll take a brief recess while everybody, everybody may want to leave, so see you guys in a few minutes. All right. Welcome back to regularly scheduled business. That was great. I think next on the agenda is the, well, we would have a Pinkerton update, but I don't think Nali is here tonight. So we will move on to the First Student Transportation Agenda item. So I don't know, Cliff, we'll start with you.
Well, I am certainly not as exciting as what we just had. But in your packet under Item 4, there are two items. The transportation contract that the Subcommittee is bringing to you tonight from First Student. In attendance tonight in the audience is David Fairweather from First Student, the regional manager, as well as Chander Welch, our own local manager. And so we present this to you tonight to vote on and approve and that's all I have to say.
Do you want to, is there, I guess, I don't know if someone from the committee wants to talk to us about the, maybe the differences between, or the changes that were made between this year's contract and what we have going forward? Or I don't know if anyone else has any questions? I know, I, I looked at a few things and I have some, maybe some comments, but I don't know if you guys wanted to address anything before the rest of the board has any other comments that they might have? Or I would entertain a motion, I mean...
No, we should. No, I guess what I would say is it was not an easy negotiation. It was pretty, you know, I might, I guess in any negotiation you'll get everything you want, but, you know, there was things that kind of didn't work for me and the other things I did. I mean, overall, I think we're getting a 16, was it 16% increase first year, 10% second year, then six across the board for the remaining three years. You know, and then there was... You know, and then there was a few things added such as a fuel peg, which you'll see in your Schedule A, the Schedule $4.10. I mean, it's pretty, pretty easy. If it goes over that number, we're on the hook. If it goes under 369, we get credited for that. So the hours per day went from six hours per day to five and a half. Excess hours we billed at $52.50. And the age of the buses went from seven years to 10 years. And then, you know, those are the biggest things that I think the material items that we work through. You know, obviously, when you read through the contract, there's a lot of different things in there regarding remote learning days, that kind of stuff. You know, on a remote learning day, it's a, you know, 50/50 split on the costs, you know, half cost, basically. I won't read everything to you, but no, those are the material items, and any questions, I'm sure Cliff and those guys could answer for you.
Is there anything in particular that is like a red flag that you think could be a problem later down the line that, like, is there anything in there that you're worried about or that you feel like it's needed to bring up forward?
So this is my opinion. I don't particularly like the increases, the 16% in the first year, 10% in the second year, and six across the board going forward. I mean, 16% is more than double the inflation rate. If, maybe, you know, two and a half times maybe at this point. So from that perspective, yeah, I mean, so, you know, part of that is, you know, Cliff's, we cut five buses going forward, so that, that's a factor in, I'm assuming in the pricing, it is a factor in the pricing. But, you know, that's, that's, that's my one, my one thing is, is the dramatic increases. And as everyone knows, our budget, you know, is increasing. And, you know, we seem to make good strides in other places, and then stuff like this comes up that kind of doesn't help. But I think overall, that's my biggest, biggest concern.
I think obviously the front-loaded increase hurts, but my question really, when we go from six to five and a half hours per day, do we, what is the average that we're seeing now, or what is the trend, maybe if you go back, I don't know, three years or something? How likely are we to incur excess billable charges over that five and a half hours per day? That's kind of, it's a variable, right? We know it's 16%. We might not love it. It is what it is. That's fixed, but are we, can we expect that we'd go over this five and a half hours regularly? Or is this just kind of a stopgap just in case? Is there somewhere we can see kind of the average?
It will be a little different next year because we are redoing all of the routes to be more efficient, and we don't anticipate going over that five and a half. That's why we went ahead and accepted that, because we were not reaching that with the six hours. And so you know that we put out the whole request for transportation so that we can pinpoint exactly how the routes are going to be done. We're going to try to make them as efficient as possible with fewer Pinkerton buses. And, because that's really what was eating up our buses, and they were running routes of 14 kids and stuff like that. So we don't anticipate regular overages like that. Am I correct, Chandra? Yes. Chandra and Dave are both nodding their heads, and I did consult them whenever we did this.
I have a question around the extracurriculars. I know that's been a point of, topic of discussion recently. Does this help us fill those or provide the busing for extracurricular activities, I guess is the best way to put this?
Well, if you've, I don't know if we've reported this, but this spring, we have met all of our extracurricular requests that have been made, that have been made in a timely manner. So the, the driver shortage appears to be over for now, and that's what was creating quite the crisis for the last year and a half. We seem to be in a good place. Chandra's been very, very positive about her new hires and the ability to fill those roles.
Perfect. And then the other thing I saw that was mentioned was, you know, the standard is to be, you know, no more than 45 minutes of being on a bus. And so I don't know if that's, if that was different previously, but, you know, I know that's something that has also come up that, you know, we never want kids waiting at a bus stop for a while, but also we don't want kids riding on a bus. So I guess two questions is, has, is that kind of what the, the standard was or protocol was before 45 minutes on the bus? But also, you know, is there any protocol around waiting for buses, whether that's at a bus stop?
The writing is the same. It's been 45. It was in the previous contract. I don't know that anybody mentions about waiting for a bus. There generally, we, we recommend to parents a five, five to 10, what is it, 10 minutes or? Five minutes on either side is the recommended wait time there. They should, and we, the bus drives to be at that stop within that 10-minute window.
And then I know we, this looks like a five-year contract. Is that correct?
Yes, we did that because the initial, we would have had a 22% increase at the very beginning, and that's why we asked to spread it out over time.
That was going to be a follow-up question. There's no way to, to spread out the increase across the five years, so if you looked at it in totality, right? So it's not a front-heavy next year. We kind of get whacked and then it tapers back.
It was worse when we started. It was much worse when we started.
Gotcha.
And to answer your question, we brought that up in the committee, and it got turned down?
Yeah, it seems it's, it's all the same, right? If you just, just it gives us flexibility in budgeting across the five years versus front-loaded. And then it seems like it, if we're agreeing to a five-year contracts, however we pay that percentage, the fees should be, could be spread across. Just a thought. I know you guys covered it, but.
Yeah, the, another, I know this was, was a clause in there. We do have the clause for convenience is we do have the option at any time to give a year's notice, and I guess the question there would be, do we have the ability to, or would we have the ability to go shop elsewhere if that's something we decided to do as a board? And so that's a big question, right, is like, do we, are there other bus options out there that are going to give us, you know, similar benefits to what we're seeing with First, with First Student at a similar or lower cost? I don't know. That's something, I don't know if it's in there, but again, we have that clause for convenience, which does give the ability for us to essentially get out of a contract as long as we give a year's notice, so unless I read that incorrectly.
No, that's correct. One, what one has to remember, though, is that you can't just compare apples to apples, because if you go elsewhere, you have to pay startup costs. There are buses to be purchased and land to be procured, because First Student owns what we have. And so you have to have startup costs, which was what made it difficult this year to send out a bid, because we were so budget-conscious that we knew that if we had to pay startup costs too, we were never going to make the budget.
So will those startup costs end up paying off in the long run, because we're going to be paying less overall for the buses that we end up making up?
It could. It could. It very well could. But this year, we were really, it was very difficult to, we were trying to get down as low as we possibly could.
Thank you.
I have two que, I have two questions. One, did we go to bid?
No, we did not.
Or we just negotiated this contract?
We just negotiated this contract.
I understand all the problems during COVID and appreciate all that our drivers did, because they're, the drivers on the buses are almost like teachers to kids and their families. They recognize them, they care about them, and they, you know, they're important. However, prior to COVID, we still had problems. We had buses that were late. We had kids that weren't getting to sports fields or weren't picked up. The last time we negotiated the contract, I trusted that we would, they would follow through with all the things that they promised. COVID aside, it didn't happen. So I'm really, I'm disappointed in that, and I'm also disappointed in this, this increase, because it is very large. And I don't know. I'm not a huge fan either, David.
What would it look like if we did go to bid? I mean, could?
At this point, I think we're, we're past that point.
It's too late to do that?
Yeah, I mean, like, like Cliff said, you'd have to, you'd find somebody to buy land, but, I mean, you know, I think, you know, I think there's other companies that, if they're regional, they may be able to work it out and not have, I don't know, I'm not, I don't know, but at this point, we're kind of, you know, we, we followed the First Student route, and we negotiated based on that. And at this point, the only real option, if you're on the fence, is what Jonathan mentioned, down the road, to take a look at it again. But my question, Cliff, too, is if I'm not mistaken, the previous contract that was negotiated, the five years was already put in there, wasn't it? As a, as a precursor for the next contract? It'd be a five-year agreement? That'd be the 2020 contract? I believe. I'll go back and look. I did read it. I'll go back and look.
I think maybe to just go on record to say that we should, maybe on an annual basis, be looking at this. I know we have a contract, but if we go to give it, we have to give one year's notice, we should probably look at this considering the cost. And especially considering the increase, and obviously, one year in, we kind of take the hit right out of the gate, but I think we owe it to the town and the taxpayers to look at this annually to say, are we in the best possible scenario, given everything that's out there, and not just take the five-year contract and say, hey, this is where we are. Oh, well, I mean, we're not talking about a few bucks here. And to me, I just, I question again why we can't spread out the percentage, right? I think I'd rather see if it's average, you know, and I don't have it, I'm looking up the numbers, but if it's 16, 10, 6, why can't it be spread to be 12 or? Oh, yeah, yeah. That doesn't have percentage, though. Yeah, yeah. Just why can't it be spread out across, it's, the dollars are the same, right? And I think just from a budgeting standpoint, it's, it seemed, to me, it seems like the right thing to do, especially going into a five-year contract.
Yeah, I mean, my, my assumption is that, that because that clause of conveni, or the clause for convenience is in there, that there's a hire in that first year, so that if we do back out after year one, then they've recouped the largest amount in that first year.
So would that give us the ability to, if we said, hey, we want to be in a five years, could we have, could we get it at a better rate? If we agreed to a five-year deal? Right? And I'm not saying we would. I'm just, that's my opinion. I'm just asking. If we said, hey, we're willing to commit to five years, can the increase be more favorable?
In the negotiations, we were given a final offer. That, it was a fin, I mean, I tried everything. Dave can attest. I, I have put it out there and, and I tried what, exactly what you're saying. We were given a final offer.
So I'll be blunt, Jason. You know, we were going at this since December, I think, and up until a month ago. In my opinion, I was not happy with the way the negotiations went. I look, so my professional background, I respect fair play, and I expect give and take in the negotiations. I felt that didn't occur. It's best, and regardless of starting at 22%, that, that's, that's absolutely ridiculous number to start with. So that doesn't even resonate with me. So I told myself I wasn't going to do this tonight, but I, I had a lot of, I was the squeaky wheel for a lot of months in that meeting before other people, Brenda and Michael joined. Yeah, so that's my personal opinion, and I feel like unfortunately, we have no leverage, which is unfortunate. And I feel like we got, well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that, but I would say we got, we took it hard here, and I'm just, I'm not, I'm not excited about it. And I haven't been for a while.
Yeah, so I think, I think this is something that, this clause for convenience is in there, and I, that's, I mean, I, this is something that my customers ask for all the time. It's something we don't give in, in my field. Most people, most companies don't, because they don't want the, the potential to have some back out, especially of a long-term contract. But I think it's something that we should probably look very strongly at. I also would expect the Transportation Committee to meet again very shortly after, after whatever happens tonight, right? If we final, if we agree that this is it, then I think, you know, we have to start this process of looking at internally the costs that we can control. And, you know, we, I think we also have to act in a way in which we are the third-largest district in the state. The vendors that we choose to work with should be privileged that they are working with us and have such large contracts. And so I think that's, you know, something that we have to, we have, we have to have that mindset going into things, is that, you know, we are the straw that drinks, they're the straw that stirs the drink. And, and, you know, again, I have a hard time believing that they would also walk away from our business as well. And that's, I know that's a shift in the mindset. But these are, these, a 22% increase, or, I mean, not even looking at 16% in year one, I had looked at, it's a 31% increase over the five years. That's just soft numbers, like, that's, like, we, we as a district can operate efficiently if that's what we're, if we're up against. And so we have some, we have a really, really tough decisions that we're going to continually make. Again, it's not just, we, we talk about facilities. We talk about the costs of educating children. This transportation number is, it's a lot, like, I mean, three, three million plus per year. It's not cheap. So we definitely, I think, you know, like I said, I'd love the Transportation Committee to get back together and, you know, start thinking about, you know, not just the next contract, but strongly considering, you know, what our options are. So I think as far as this, this year, like David said, I don't know how much leverage we have, and so it's almost, we have to, because we have to provide transportation, so.
I just want to put on the record that I really don't love the idea of how much little power we have with Pinkerton and how it just seems like the president is that they just do what they want, and we, our hands are tied, and we just take what they give us, and I just, I really don't love the, how that ends up working out. So if that means that we go and we look at alternatives, then that, that may be what we have to do. Because just to make a point of that, like, we're not going to just take these incredibly high increases and do absolutely nothing about it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't really know what Pinkerton has to do with that. We have, I mean, I'm in the business of providing transportation for all students in Derry.
I know, I get that.
I know there's been ideas thrown out there that we could charge Pinkerton for, we could charge, start charging for high school transportation. I don't think that's a road we necessarily, I mean, again, I'm one of seven, but that's not the road I would want to go down. But yeah, go ahead, Brenda.
So what are the opportu, options for going back and re-discussing this? We're short, time's short. We have a contract that starts on July 1. Like I said, I, I went into a meeting learning about this, so I didn't have any, I don't know all the stuff that happened prior. But it doesn't sound like anybody on the board's happy with this. So what are, what are our, because I don't know, what are our options to go back and say, this is hard for us?
Absolutely. Yeah, because we're faced, because we all agree that, it seems like we all agree, I don't want to speak for anybody, that we have to provide tran, or, we have to. There's no ifs, ands, or buts. We have to, yeah, we literally have to provide transportation. But we don't, we don't think it's great, the, the price that we're getting to, or needing to provide that transportation. So yeah, I guess the question would go to, you know, the administration or Cliff of, you know, is there, and I know, I know First Student's here, but I'm not going to put them on the spot, but, you know, we have, and the June 20th meeting would be the, I'm assuming the last ultimate time where we can make a decision. So I don't know if there is, you know, one last go-around that there could be potential to have, to see if, you know, maybe we can smooth this out, because what I'm seeing from the board is really none of us are exactly thrilled with the increases that we're seeing.
If I could just add a couple of thoughts to this. I think we need to remember, we had Diane Guro, who helped us with our last one and worked with this one, who does a lot of these around the state. And I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody is saying, wow, we got a fantastic, we negotiated a fantastic contract in 2023 for transportation. So we have the ability, a year. So we have the ability a year down the road or whatever, or the next year or the next year to keep looking at this. We've had, you know, I do think one of the things that I have heard from Cliff is that Dave and Chandra a different leadership than probably those five years ago. They seem to be more willing to cooperate with us and Cliff has developed a good relationship with them. But I do think we have to, nobody's going to, we're never, we're never completely happy with any of our contracts because it's a negotiation process and there's give and take. And I think I'm just a little nervous about where we're at. And especially with the facility stuff coming through and the decisions that this group has to make about closing a school in the next month. That decision has to be made and what we're going to get from Gail Associates and all the rest of that. And I think as David said, this has been something that's been going on for six months or so and pretty intensely. And we did rely on input from Diane because she does these on a regular basis. So I just think we've got to be careful about at this stage of the game, thinking that we're going to be able to do some major negotiations in a short period of time. Just something to think about.
May I add too, one of the reasons for the increase is because we have some of the lowest paid drivers in the area. And while David will say that's on them to pay them, we are their source of revenue. This is what they use to pay those drivers. And we will not continue to have extracurricular drivers if we lose them to the districts around us, if they can get a better paycheck. And that's one of the driving forces in the increase there is to move our drivers to a very competitive rate. Now, they're going up for their their contract negotiations and First Student has to have the funds to be able to give them a raise.
So are you telling me that the drivers are getting a 16% increase in their?
I didn't say that.
So that's, I mean, I think that's, that's.
I said that they need revenue in order to be able to increase the driver's rate of pay.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we'd all be in favor if, you know, we just, if if all we were doing was support, or not all, if the majority of what the increases were, were going directly to the bus drivers. I have a hard time believing that fully, but yeah, again, like, like Austin said, David said, we're, we are not in a position of power. And so it is, it's tough. And so, I mean, whatever the board, whatever the boards will are tonight, like, I think we got to move forward with that. So I think it's something that, you know, each one of us has to think long and hard about as far as what the, what this next step looks like as far as a potential motion that gets put on, or it's potentially, maybe it's a tabling discussion till next week. So, or not next week, next meeting.
Just a, just a couple of things that during the negotiations that we discussed, you mentioned Pinkerton. The, there were some things that we can do. For instance, we don't have to supply any transportation to high school age students. Unfortunately, if we didn't do that, it would have zero effect upon the cost. We still run the same amount of buses because of the timeframe. So we explored that, but it didn't save any money. If we pulled back the distances, which we could do, there aren't that many students that are in that that little gap there between what you'd save and you couldn't consolidate the buses much more than than we're at right now. So those cost saving measures were looked at, believe me, we looked at about everything we could. I think that just for the, for the edification of people who might be watching or who inquire down the road as far as why they're paying so much more. This has nothing to do with the board. We tried as hard as we could. This has to do with, I think, the people that the vendor was in a position of strength, we were in a position of weakness, they were acutely aware of that. And I think that they took full advantage of it. If that continues, then we're going to continue to be in the same boat. Unfortunately, but if it doesn't, then we can keep that in mind if we have to go to another vendor at some point in time. But believe me, I don't think across the board, there's anyone that's that's pleased with the increase or that doesn't think that it's anything short of exorbitant or usury. So.
The only thing I would add with regards to the wage, the wage point is, why is Derry the lowest, one of the lower paid districts of bus drivers with the third largest district in the state? Right? Third or fourth, whatever it is, number of third. Why is that? I mean, these increases have probably been happening since 2017 or whenever the first contract came, whatever, how long it's been going on. So that's a nonstarter with me because I don't run their business. I pay for them to run their business and I don't look at it in those terms of that they need to cover their salary costs. Yeah, I get it, you know, but I don't, that's not my problem. I pay for a service. I'm paying a premium for a service. And yeah, I just, that doesn't resonate with me and it never will.
I feel like we may have exhausted our conversation around this. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to possibly approve the contract for as presented, or we possibly table this conversation till the next board meeting, pending, you know, maybe the Transportation Committee meeting one last time. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I don't know if it makes any sense to punt it two weeks to the next meeting. I mean, this contract's been being worked on for quite some time. I mean, Cliff, you say that this is the best deal we're going to get at this point.
I'm looking at Dave, I don't think the First Student is coming back to the table. I don't know any, either you accept it or reject this contract.
And we need transportation for next year. And I mean, inevitably, I don't know that there's anything that we can do other than take this contract for this year and moving forward. If we want to research our options over the next year as to, you know, what else there is out there other than First Student, if we want to you know, make sure that we're keeping on top of them and that they're fulfilling the requirements in the contract over the next year, maybe more than has been being done. Then yes, absolutely. But yeah, I don't know that there's really anything else that we can do.
Can we add into the motion if we're like, if we're going to approve it tonight, but put in there that we're going to look into other options within this next year? No, we can't add that in there? No, thank you.
I mean, we, I'm sure someone could, but I would not, I would not, yeah.
I'm going to make a motion that we table this until the June 20 meeting.
We have a first by Brenda, a second by Paul. Is there any discussion on tabling it till June 20? I will be honest, I'm, I'm kind of there with Michael. I think we're, we're stuck. I don't, I don't, actually, the question is, is I guess.
Two weeks is going to buy us.
Well, that give us a month, but yeah, I guess, is there a expiration date of the contract? Or is it just July 1? Is that like, I know you said, I know you said.
July 1.
Okay.
As of July 1, we don't have a contract.
I get that. But I mean, I guess over the next month, if is First Student even going to entertain a meeting with us? That would be my, my, my question. Because that's what, that's essentially what we're going to be doing. If we vote on this and we say yes, we're going to ask for a student to come back to the negotiation table and they could just tell us no, which, I mean, I would prefer the March or the June 6 meeting, not the June 20. I don't want to wait that long.
In January, I went back to them or February, January, February, because you weren't happy with the numbers. And they weren't willing to come back to the table then. I'm not so sure they're going to come back to the table now.
All right. So we do have a motion on the table. Any other comments or discussion around that? I guess I'll do a, I guess I'll do a roll call vote. Brenda? Oh, yeah. So Brenda, do you want to amend that to?
So the reason I gave the 20th was because it gave us time to potentially have a conversation. June 6 is, there's a holiday weekend, there's a day off. That was my reasoning.
And we'll keep the motion as is?
Yes.
So Brenda, you're in favor? Jason? Michael? Kearney? I vote no. David? Oh. So the motion passes four to three? All right. With that, then I would, I would suggest, or I will ask the Transportation Committee to meet. I would say yes, as soon as possible. Yeah, as soon as possible. All right. Well, that wraps up that agenda item. Now we will move on to the 2023, 2024 School Board Goals. So again, just want to thank all the School Board members for coming together and doing this. It was probably a month ago now. Appreciate all the feedback and input. Couple of things I just wanted to point out here in the evidence is that on goal two, 2.1, so to provide highly quality learning opportunities, so all students continue to develop, communicate and support a pre K through grade eight plan for competency based curriculum. What will be created or accomplished? One of the, we, David and I had said a dashboard or scorecard that allows us to see progress across the entire district. I just, we both thought that, you know, we need something to see where we're starting and where we're progressing to. So I don't know if there's a, if there's a term that others would prefer. Or another part, another term that they wanted to input there. Okay. And then 4.1, refining the budget process. So we had, we had put the administration, the School Board and the Fiscal Advisory Committee. Are people fine with that as well? Okay. I think those are the only two things that I had highlighted that I wanted to make sure. So any other comments or questions that, and I don't know, should I go through these one by one to, okay? Okay. Well, yeah.
What is, what is the correct term for the way competencies are tracked or reported out instead of have us having a term that we know, but nobody else knows, I'd rather use the same terminology that the district uses instead of dashboards. I don't, I don't love scorecard because we're not playing baseball.
I think sort of the, the devil's in the details. I think we can, we can design any type of metric or report. I think the key would be, the language that I picked up from you, Jonathan, was agree upon a thing that, a thing or things that we're going to measure and measure the same thing every time so that we can demonstrate some sort of growth, progress, understand. There are, I don't want to say an infinite number of things that you could measure, but there are lots of things that we could measure. My, without having talked to the whole curriculum department right now, so I'm just going to kind of side eye Kim to see how she feels about what I'm about to say. The competencies are assessed by individual teachers in their classrooms. It is a difficult measure to apply broadly across the entire district that would give you something usable. We do have a lot of more standardized data. So we administer the NWA map testing in math and English Language Arts to almost all of our students three times a year, depending on the really, really young kids, the kindergarten kids, they do not get that when they walk in the door in September because that's not appropriate. But we have lots of regular data. If there is a, and and of course, we have the New Hampshire State Assessment data that's administered once a year to students in grades three through eight and additionally, science data in grades five and eight. So we have, we have lots of points of data. I think what would be, what would be really important is the board identifying some really key indicators that they want to see on a very regular basis. NWA map data is the easiest thing to provide on a regular basis because we do it three times a year and we get the results immediately. And there could be, so let me give you some thought experiments. And I think some of this should probably be done at the committee level. But if one of the things you really cared about were the percentage of students who met or exceeded their expected growth target. Again, don't want to get too deep into the weeds here, but expected growth targets are norm referenced targets based on, you know, if a student is reading at this level in September, we, and they're this age, we anticipate in January, they'll be at this level and in May, they'll be at this level, right? So they, there are targets that students have. Some students meet or exceed their targets and some students fall short of meeting their targets. The percentage of students that meet or exceed growth targets is an internal metric that we use because it looks at every single individual student and where they are and where they're going. So it doesn't measure apples against oranges, it measures me against me. So that's one metric if the board, now, other metrics might be the percentage of students that are proficient at each grade level. There could be the percentage of students that move from level, you know, the 20 to 40 percentile. There are lots and lots of different metrics. I think if we're looking at big, big numbers, we should probably as a, as a group, talk about what are the two, three, and those are just assessment data indicators. If there are other indicators that people want to see that aren't necessarily, you know, you, you put this under. So academics, high quality learning opportunities, high quality learning doesn't just get measured by NWA map testing, right? So we could do other, whether it's surveys of students and parents, we could do attendance record, we could do lots of things. I see Jason's hand up. So I'm going to stop.
So I would like to see sort of an aggregate, a blended approach. I think if we talk specifically the assessments of the NIWA testing, then it swings too heavily in one direction with the emphasis then becomes let's solely focus on the results of the NIWA testing versus what's happening in the classroom. So my opinion would be not to discount the NIWA testing. I think that plays into it, but how do we have something blended that aggregates the total student experience together? So we're not like solely focused on testing and then the classroom experience kind of suffers. Not saying it would, but if if we are measuring a goal against progress on NIWA, then it becomes, that's the primary P1 focus, right? So for me, as a parent of a student in the district, would like to see something that's blended. That kind of takes into account all of the factors that happen throughout the child's, the student's day.
And the goal is continue to develop, communicate and support a pre K eight plan for competency based curriculum. So while test scores are important, it doesn't totally address the the goal, right? We want to know what is happening, what's the process? How is it working? How is it, you know, what, what needs to be tweaked? What doesn't need to be tweaked? What can we do better? What can we, you know, what shouldn't we continue to do? I think that's more of what I read into this goal. Test scores are fine, sort of. Important. They're important data for us, not for children, in my opinion. But I think, I don't feel like the goal is necessarily talking about test scores. But maybe I'm wrong. I'm only one of these guys. That's, but that's what I read into it. Like, what are we doing? Because we're moving forward with a new curriculum, sort of. In a lot of ways, right? We're just, we're kind of baby stepping into into competencies at this point. And, you know, what is the feedback from staff? What is the feedback from parents with the, with the new report card? Like, those are the, those are the things I think that we need to be able to, I'm going to use assess, but I don't mean assess. Like, how is it working for people and how are we going to do that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree with all of that. I think I think the goal is, what's important, right, is like the high quality learning opportunities to all students, right? I think the purpose of these goals is to try to put something up there, like a North Star metric for us to try and go after. My hope is that, you know, we, we put in here who will be responsible. So the Curriculum Committee, so hopefully, you know, us from the board and then in tandem with the administration and the teachers that are on that as well. I think hopefully, we can figure that out. I don't want to, I think this is actually a really good conversation, but I think it's also something, you know, we should, yeah, we should, yeah, let's have the committee, like, let's continue that in a, in a curriculum committee meeting. And then, you know, we continue to do this, right? And because it's, it is important, right? And there's, yeah, the, the data is, it tells us something, so it is important. But yeah, it's not the only thing. So it's good. I'm glad this is, this is good. The only other thing, or actually, two things I wanted to point out on these is that The only other thing, or actually, two things I wanted to point out on these is that, sorry, we added a, sorry, we'll have to change that, 3.3. So Brenda, you had mentioned successfully negotiating an ASME contract. So put that in there. That'll be handled by the Negotiations Committee, an updated collectively bargain agreement. And I have a feeling it'll be, I mean, that's, I think that gets done before the public hearing usually, so February 2023. And then, 20, did I write, 2024, yep, we'll update that, too. And then the other last thing was the five-year strategic plan. So I am planning on creating a Strategic Plan Committee, so that's a new committee. I have in my mind who I think would make a good idea, but I don't know if there was anyone that had strong feelings that were like, hey, you know, I really want to be on that, but I figured I could have that committee formed by the June 6th meeting, and then we could figure out, start planning that, so. But yeah, that was the only other thing that I just wanted to call out on these goals. Anybody else?
Real quick, the other big thing is on 4.2, we talk about advocate for additional funding sources to support maintenance of facilities. One of the, one of the, you know, accomplished areas is we need to develop warrant articles for this upcoming cycle and figure out how we're going to pay for the next round of roofs, you know, other repairs. So we have an October 2023 date there, so we can try to do a good job of planning this in advance and, you know, over the next couple of meetings, we have a big decision to make. Then after that, we really need to start digging in and figure out, how do we want to fund the next round of, of repairs?
I lied, I have one other thing. We talked about, where is this? The, refine the budgeting process, yeah, this is another thing. So there's been feedback from Fiscal Advisory Committee members, we've talked about it specifically with this year's negotiation. So as, I just want to see, or just wanted you guys, make you guys aware, July 2023 of, of meeting with the Fiscal Advisory Committee is something that I would like to invite them to a, a meeting, and actually, this might go hand in hand with, you know, Austin's agenda item for meeting schedule, but I think it's important that, you know, we include the Fiscal Advisory Committee earlier in the process if possible. And so, you know, again, this might be part of the meeting schedule, but I'd love, I'd like to have a meeting on the calendar in, in the summer so that we can meet with them and kind of get our ducks in a row for that as well. All right, I don't think we need to vote on these, do we? Okay, everyone's comfortable with these, then? Okay, all right, I'll make the updates, and then I'll send Kathleen an updated, updated goal sheet. All right, with that, we'll move on to the facilities discussion. So I'll, Austin, I'll let you guys get started with anything you guys want to cover first, and then if anyone else, I know the Facilities Committee met, was it last week? So we'll actually, or we can start there, I don't know if you guys have a preference. All right, we'll start with Austin.
So I'm going to quickly turn it over to Joe and Kim regarding curriculum, and also Jane regarding what's coming up with what we, that facilities, as well as Gail Associates and Honeywell.
Just a quick update, the Curriculum and Instruction Team Committee that has been working had our second meeting last Thursday. We did something a little different, we met, we broke into two groups, we had an hour session with staff members and, and some board members, and then we had a second hour session with, that focused on parents. A lot of that was driven by, in our first session, we, in a number of activities that we did, one of the things that we asked people to do was share questions that they had and concerns that they had, and the real, those, those topics kind of fell into sort of two different big areas, one around staffing decisions and things that were really operational type stuff around, you know, explain to me what teaming might look like, which were really teacher-centric topics. We wanted to really give those some time with teachers to sort of explore. We had a, a number of issues, the other topics were around, how do we, how do we appropriately transition students and families to, to, through this process, and how do we support social-emotional learning? And not to say that either of those two things don't apply to both groups, but there, we wanted to give time to allow the groups to sort of really dig into the things that they seem to really want to talk about. So we did that. We, like always, have more to talk about, so we have another meeting scheduled in a week from this Thursday, our, our last of the three scheduled meetings during, before the close of the school year. We also are going to be, we just invited the teacher-staff group for a quick one-hour session this Thursday because we cut short on some of their discussions, just because people have a lot to talk about. So we asked, hey, is anybody interested in coming back together this Thursday? So, so far, so good, lots of feedback, lots of good discussions. We hope to get some members from some other local communities who have gone through this process to talk with us and give us their thoughts, advice. Anything else, Kim? Okay, that's it for us.
Do we, does anyone have questions for Joe or Austin before we go? All right, I don't know who from the Facilities Committee wants to...
Jane just has a quick update.
Sorry.
That's okay, so we did have a Facilities Committee meeting, we did have a representative from Gail there who talked about their progress, we talked about being able to, whether we can meet the deadline of all three schools, Dairy Village, South Range, and West Runningbrook, all for the June 6th meeting, and with the timeline, we worked it out that they would present South Range and Dairy Village findings on June 6th, and we would move the discussion regarding the findings for the building envelope here at West Runningbrook would be presented on the 20th. And so that way, they would still be able to make the deadline that we were looking for. We also had a discussion outside, not a Facilities Committee meeting, but talked with Honeywell regarding some of their findings. Remember, we've contracted with them for ESAR-funded HVAC upgrades and repairs, so they had some information that would be pertinent to that project, and Honeywell also will be here present on June 6th. And we would like to be, you know, hopefully moving forward with our Honeywell project. As we know, ESAR funds, those funds are going to expire next year, and the sooner that we can get supplies and materials ordered through that project would be the better because I think they're still having delays in getting some of the materials. So that's where we are right now on facilities.
Question about the if, for ESAR funding, and this is probably a little off-topic, so, sorry, but just came in my mind, if we have a vendor that is scheduled to come in, does that work have to be completed by a certain date, or can we have a contract in place by a certain date to expend the money?
The work does not need to be completed by the end of the grant date, but a contract needs to be in place prior to, you're correct. And we also have to make sure that we're in compliance with all of the ESAR rules and regulations with contracting with vendors, the Davis Bacon Act and things like that.
Anybody else have anything they want to add from the Facilities Discussion, or questions they want to ask?
I mean, the, the big thing is just anticipation of the initial report for the two schools by June 1st, I think, is what they said. So prior to the sixth meeting, the board will have time to review the, at least the, the two-school report, so it's not going to be, just so people understand, it's not going to be, we're all kind of seeing it the night of the 6th and trying to digest and trying to process, we'll have some time in advance, and then the third school will come in, in time for the June 20th meeting. But as Jane noted, Honeywell and Gail will be here to, to present their findings. So I think really, we, we all kind of need to see those reports before there's really any further discussion, at least in my opinion.
And we also had a discussion about roofs and, sorry, David, and moving forward with ARM, who did the initial assessments of the roofs. So hopefully, we'd like to start getting, I think I took the feedback from the board in regards to not waiting to do the design for the roofs, so I think we'll think about moving forward to that so that we are prepared to be going out for bids and having roof replacements next summer.
That's good news.
So the other thing that came out of that meeting was we kind of looked at which roofs to look at first, and I think the recommendation we came up with was here at West, and Barker is the first two to do, pending of, you know, the thoughts of everyone here, but those are the two, especially, you know, with West, you know, the, the reason why the report's being delayed is a lot of, a lot going on in that report, so there's going to be a lot of information to provide everybody, and, you know, we need to really make a decision on which ones to do first, but I think that as a consensus in that room that day, we, we talked about West Runningbrook and Barker being the first two to look at, but we're going to do the designs on five, five out of this, you know, do the first five, and then once we make the decision on the 20th, we'll go forward with the other two, other one, excuse me, and then that's kind of where we, where we let off, left off that day.
Yeah, I think this, this is, just hearing that just already gives me heartburn, knowing that the two schools that are in the worst need of roofs are the two newest schools in the district. So I think that's just something that we all need to keep in mind, especially when we start doing major repairs and renovations and whatever, like, whenever vendors come in here, we, we need to make sure we're doing our due diligence to make sure that the work that's being done is going to last a very, very long time. So that's, yeah, that's just a thought that crossed my mind.
Yeah, that's a good point, Jonathan, and the, and the Gail, the guy who came for, talked to us from Gail, mentioned that we need to have an engineer on site checking it out once a week, whatever the, whatever the interval is that's acceptable, we, someone needs to be doing that, because, you know, he's speculating when he says this, you know, when some of the issues we have from a construction perspective is probably just that, they didn't have somebody that needs to, engineer-wise, look at, but he's speculating, but the point is that we need to have somebody that is looking at the work as it's happening on a, on a regular interval to ensure that, you know, things are getting done the way they should be, you know, moving forward.
Yeah, the, the speculation was that the problems that we're having at these buildings had to do with things not being installed to spec at the time that they were done, and that's why we're having problems now. So yeah, moving forward with all these repairs and everything they were going to be doing, you know, like Gail suggested, we're going to want to make sure that we have somebody who's making sure that the construction companies are doing things the way they were designed.
I, yeah, I, the smile's not, not, not because I'm happy. All right, well, that covers that agenda. Oh, I guess the other thing, so based off the last discussion, and, you know, the, I guess, the consent, I guess, with the board, you know, David and I met with Austin and Joe and Dave Karen, and I think, what, Bev Dunham, is that what I mean? Bev Dunham, all right, last name, all right. And they said that, you know, really, no matter which school we were to close, then they would most likely form a committee and look into, you know, potentially using that, if that's something that we would be interested in a town, as, not in the town, as a district. But, you know, it's not, I don't think, there was nothing that he said or Bev said that, you know, made me say, okay, yeah, you know, we should consider really one school over another, I think it's, we just continue to look at the facts and the data that's presented to us. So I don't know, that's, that was just the, the one other thing I wanted to make sure I covered.
Yeah, I think like the, the town being interested in purchasing a building, I think we also need to think about that in tandem with how much work do each of these buildings need? Like, if we were to sell the town a building that's in better shape than the others, is it can end up costing us more money in the long run to fix the one that we keep? So like, I mean, I think that's got to be a major factor in any decision, not, you know, just strictly any interest that they might have.
Sorry, now we went in.
I just wanted to go back to the roofs, Jane, do you need us to vote or approve to go forward with having the, the two sets of drawings done, the, the designs done for those two roofs? Are we good to go? I'm just asking.
I think we agree the two, all of them at once, right? Except for the two.
Yeah, but then start, and I think.
Start with those two priority, sure.
But we're, we're good to proceed, right? Okay, I just.
I, I think the board should be good to proceed, I mean, we would, we would like to continue our, our work with ARM since they've done all the initial work and have all of our specs, so, you know, hopefully with the board's blessing, we're able to continue to do that. And we would, again, ARM is a consultant and they're engineers, they would not be building the roof or being able to bid on replacing the roof, they are just the design engineers, so I just want to make that clear to people that they're not, they don't do both, so.
Yeah, so when, when they're done with the designs, then we will have to vote, or put it to bid and then vote, I'm assuming, right?
For the actual roof replacement, correct, yes.
Perfect. All right, anything else? All right, well, with that, I believe Jane, I'm assuming you're handling the auditors' report?
I'm going to handle it as best I can. So we were going to have the auditors present tonight, and unfortunately, with their schedule, they were unable to, and I think that they were going to come to the next board meeting, which is really jam-packed, so I did talk to them and we decided to just, we could just put the audit report in the board packet. We do get hard copies of the audit, and I will have those at the office probably within a week, and so each of you could pick up one of those if you'd like to read a hard copy of it. But what we've included in here is a governance letter, which is something that we get every year, it's standard to all, all of their clients who are doing municipality audits. Of note, on the second page, they have to identify some risks whenever they go out, and two of the identified risks are ones that would be identifiable for any firm that they're auditing. So management override of internal controls, that is a risk on every client that they audit. Recognition of revenue is also one that is a risk going into, for any client. And grants receivable and year-end revenue recognition, that one was specific to us, and what it is, is they base it on historical understanding of the grants, and they have new standards that they have to communicate their risks to the districts that they're auditing. So based on our large number of federal audit, I mean, federal funds and our receivables for those, and having to do some journal entries, it does not signify fraud or anything like that, it just identifies that with a district of our size, that they would have to, that there is some inherent risk with that. So, and they also refer to planning, we changed our model in which we are doing our federal grants, so it's basically a historical understanding of the grants and the revenues, and these were for January of 2021, so we don't anticipate that that would be a, a risk for the 22, 23 year. And again, there were no findings on, on any of the federal funds. But further along in the audit, I am not going to go through it like the auditors were, but this is a full compilation of all of our funds through general fund, food service, federal funds, and I'd like to note, and they point out that the school district, we usually use Moody ratings, and the school district is still an AA2 rating, which is the third-highest long-term credit rating that Moody, Moody's assigns to what they call high-quality fixed-income securities, meaning that we are very low credit risk. Now, the importance to that is that our financials are really solid, and our audits have been solid, and having a high credit rating with Moody's is really important if we were to go out to. out to bond, which I I know that that may become um an option when we go through the budget process again. So having a high credit credit rating is really important to our district. And we're very proud that we've been able to maintain such a high credit rating. And while I'm very proud of the work that I do for the audits and financials, I can't go without thanking our district, I must say district attorney. Um I'll be surprised he's doing um um loyal work tomorrow. Uh a district accountant, Bill Roy, who is um implemental in doing a lot of this work for us and all of the financial staff who continually pull data and work together to um provide information for the auditors. So Mary Webster, Liz Emes, Patty Doyle, also Tracy. And there are other departments that also contribute to having a successful audit. Kim, because of all the grants that she manages, and Laura and her department. Also, our school secretaries, who are each responsible for their student activity accounts. They manage all the finances that they are um bringing in and expending. All of their accounts are audited as well. So big thank you to those secretaries and everybody that had a hand in um us having a very successful audit. This one was for 2122. So it was for the prior year. We are currently in a single audit as we speak for the 2122 school year. So it's a whole fiscal year behind us. But they um do single audits for projects that have a high amount in them. And so right now, we're going through a single audit for IDEA, which are Laura's projects for special education and um ESER funds because of the dollar amount. So um those are really no surprise. Sometimes we get audited on food service because they meet the the threshold. So um and we also are working, actually, I talked to the auditors today, we're working on pulling all our information for the 2223 audit. So we're constantly in a auditing cycle. And we also have um our 2223, this current fiscal year, we have an ESER program monitoring audit taking place in our office on June 13th. Does anybody if have any questions? I mean, some of the detail in the in the actual audit, I may have to get answers to. But if anybody has any general questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I mean, I read the letter, the numbers and stuff are not my cup of tea or my forte. But um one of the things that mentioned in the letter was uncorrected or corrected misstatements. It did mention that they're immaterial. Is there anything that we should be aware of or anything there? Like I said, it said immaterial, but I was like, oh, I'll ask.
Yeah, I mean, immaterial for us would be shocking in your checking account, right? But for a hundred million dollar budget. So what that really means is if um something was a small dollar amount, a thousand dollars was posted to um what they consider um a receivable instead of an encumbrance, they consider that immaterial. So and those are things that as we go through our audit, when they are here, July, August, and they are pulling all of our data, and they look through and they may say, you know what, we really feel that this really should have been an encumbrance, or this should have been a payable. Um so there are things like that. And they consider them immaterial because the dollar amount based on a budget we have.
Yeah, that's what I figured. Um, okay, anyone else have uh I looked at David because I know he's the uh he's the financial, the financial guru.
Say, there was a typo on page 25 of the act report. They called long term maturities of 2023 instead of, I think it was the um what's the bond we have for Honeywell Bond? That I think its maturity is like 34, right? 2034 or something like that. But I thought that was funny. Not a big deal. It's gonna be a hard time.
That's okay. And and not included in those, we have a lot of Gatsby reports that we've been having to do. So some of those are listed in there because we do have um they have new Gaspys where we now have to start as of next year, accounting, logging all of um our long term leases. So our copiers, we also are going to have to start recording all of our software long term contracts, which is different than the timings, different than nonprofits, municipality is different. So those are things that we are, we also have to take into account.
Well, if no one else has any other comments or questions, thank you, Jane, and everyone else that you mentioned as well. Um, we appreciate the hard work that you guys do to get those done. We wish you didn't have to do them. But um alright, well, moving on to the 2324 school board meeting schedule. So I'll pass it over to Austin. That's no, I guys, this is this, this is a, this is like, anybody that, the agenda is the thing I screw up the most. So sorry, I apologize.
I'm actually gonna be really quick on that one because the formal report that I presented last meeting will be in the June 6th presentation. So um and that way everybody can have that. Uh so really just three quick things. We have been putting out some RFPs. We actually have a current RFP out there for the sidewalk at Gilbert H Hood. And um Jeremy worked with Alan Kotay from the town on drafting that RFP. So thank you to Alan on that. Uh we, Jeremy reached out to four paving companies that the town has worked with before. Two of them um had not replied back. Quite honestly, I think that they are too big to bid on that project. Um one of them, another um paving company said that they would not be bidding. The fourth one did put in a bid, which is almost double what we had budgeted. So um I would just like to put it out there. We'll probably be trying to reach out to some more paving companies before we close off that bid. We'll also be posting RFPs for uh individual contractors. And what I mean by that is um having a contracted rate for, we're gonna put out bid for HVAC vendors, put out a bid for plumbing vendors, um electrical vendors, so that we are getting their rate and that rate would be good for a number of years. And then we are under contract with them and have somebody on call. We obviously work with um very solid contractors now, but we want to do it as more of a formalized bid. And um uh one of the last things, I apologize, I did not get this in in time for the meeting, but I had told Brenda that I would bring it and I forgot until the meeting came out. But this is really just the historical for the Pinkerton Academy bills, so that you can see back from the 1819 school year on to this current year, um where the grade levels were, how much we were billed and how much we were budgeted on the the bottom line, so that you can see the difference um at the end of that fiscal year, whether we were over, whether we were under. So you can see in the 2223 year um compared to last year, our numbers are getting a little tighter. And I know next year, we reduce the number of projected students again. So we will be very tight next year. Um and we do have, you can see the surplus in resource, and that can be for a variety of reasons. Um but overall difference, you can see those on the bottom. I will make sure that I have this posted tomorrow for the public to see. But it is just off of their billing. And I just wanted to note that. And um lastly, what I have is I just want to mention that I am on the Touch a Truck Committee, which we've been doing, I think, for five years now. And we are having our event here at West Running Brook on June 3rd. The event is from 10 a.m. until 2 p.m. Um of interest from 10 to 11, it's silent. So students who have um maybe some issues with loud noises and things like that, from 10 to 11, they will not be using the horns on any of the trucks that'll be here. From 11 on till 2 o'clock, it'll be very loud at the event. Um we are gonna have the CERT helicopter, we'll be there in the morning, and the National Guard helicopter will be there as well tomorrow, tomorrow.
Yeah, that'll be tomorrow.
They'll be here to pick us all up tomorrow. Um on June 3rd, and um they have a lot of good vehicles that are gonna be there. They are going to have um food vendors, food trucks that are gonna be there. They'll also have the BMX bike uh show. And they will, the police department got a grant, and they will be uh fitting and passing out helmets to to uh children. So hopefully people can attend. We are gonna have shuttle buses that will be picking up at Dairy Village, SAU office. And this year, we'll be using Pinkerton's uh senior lot for overflow parking and picking up. That's it.
Thank you. Yeah, the Touch a Truck is a great event. If you have a kid, throw them back in the squad car. Tell them not to do it again. Yeah, better be the only time I see this. Um alright, now, Austin, now I'll pass it over to you.
Okay, if you'd uh look at the proposed, the draft of the uh school board calendar for 2023, 2024, um July 25th is the 4th um Tuesday, August 22nd is the 4th Tuesday, September 12th, and September 26th, 2nd and 4th, October 10th, October 24th, 2nd and 4th, November 14th, November 28th, 2nd and 4th, uh December 12th, 2nd, January 9th, January 13th, 2nd and 4th. A reminder that January 9th is the public hearing that we have. Um and then the regular board meeting follows that. Um February 3rd and February 13th, February 13th is the 2nd and the regular school board meeting. February 3rd is the Saturday, first Saturday, of course. And it is our deliberative session right here in the gymnasium at West Running Brook. Um March 5th, as normal, is uh the first Tuesday due to the town school election, um being on the 12th, which is the 2nd. And then March 26th is the 4th, April 9th is the 2nd, May 14th, May 28th, 2nd and 4th. And then once again, with our June meetings, um specifically due to the retirement celebration, um happening sooner than later, June 4th is the first Tuesday. And then we're back to June 25th, the 4th. And then I will point out that as of now, unless uh something changes, meetings are held at West Running Brook Middle School's cafeteria.
Alright, um if we were to add a meeting with the Fiscal Advisory Committee, would that be something that we would have to add to this meeting schedule?
Yeah, I remember I got in trouble last year because I tried to put the whole kit and caboodle together in one big felled swoop. So we decided, no, let's do the school board meetings. And you guys can decide on that. And then once we have the school board meetings, if you want other meetings, we can use this as a um um guide to make sure we don't hit, for the most part, 2nd and 4th Tuesdays.
Perfect. And then you you brought up, you know, we were holding our meetings here, you know, um the town offered to host the meetings at the municipal center. Um I know we, another option was potentially Hood, uh should we move locations or venues? I guess the question I have is, would all these dates be available if they were being held at the municipal center and or Hood as well?
Hood would be um no issue. We would schedule around, just like West Running Brook would schedule around, um staying away from the 2nd and 4ths. But use this again as a guide. Uh the municipal center does have um second, because the town council's on 1st and 3rd, they do have 2nd and 4th Tuesdays if the board was considering that and wants to, they have other days too, if somebody wants to go real crazy and try a different night. But yeah, they have 2nd and 4th Tuesdays available.
Yeah, that I I guess my concern with that is like you're looking at like March 1st would be a first, a first Tuesday. I would assume June 4th would be another one. Again, it's only two meetings, but um yeah, I that it just kind of brings, that brings up a bigger discussion of if that's something that, you know, the board wants to consider. Um I don't know, if that's a topic of conversation we try and have now, or if nobody's even interested in it, then we don't even have to have that discussion either. So um but let's talk about the count, I guess, yeah, let's, anyone have questions or comments about the schedule? I mean, I feel like it's pretty straightforward.
No comments about the schedule, looks pretty straightforward. I think I'd like to talk about the potential of moving to the municipal center. I think the town's offered it. Um I think Kearney mentioned at the last meeting, these are professional meetings, the room is set up for it. Um I think it's good to to continue the partnership with the town, not to mention the custodial staff not having to set up, break down, stay late. Um I think, you know, when we do have uh folks in the audience, this room, it's set up for it, I think. And and just a change of scenery um might be good as we kind of move forward and um look to to really push things forward uh for the district. So my thought would be to um make a motion to move to the Dairy um Municipal Center for at least the next school year, try it out, see how it goes and go from there.
So I just wanna, did you make a motion or?
I made a motion.
Okay, so motion, motion is on the table from Jason to move the um school board meetings to the municipal center for the 24, 2324 year, second by Kearney. Um so now there's discussion to be had. Um anyone else want to add to that discussion?
I mean, the positive is, right, that it's gonna save us a little money. You know, I mean, we're paying right now to have janitorial staff here overtime, right? Are they here anyway? So that is not costing us any money? Okay. So is it costing us any money to have the meetings here?
I imagine there's negligible if we have late meetings. But Austin, do you want to correct us if we're wrong there? The the custodial staff would be here regardless.
The sound for how much money? 12,000. That's a cost.
So there's that. Um that's money we've already incurred.
I mean, that's a sunk cost.
Yeah, sunk costs, which um so my, I I struggle with saying to do it for a year because I think consistency is important. Um that's one thing I, that's that's the one part I struggle with. I think if we're gonna do this, then I don't think we can be doing this willy nilly or saying, hey, we're gonna do this for a year. It's, I think, um if we're to do it, then I think we need to be consistent in that. Um my, again, I have a little bit of a struggle of today being like, hey, yeah, we could definitely do this without knowing for sure, you know, these other dates that we can move around. So maybe that's another, but I think we can make it happen if that's the case. Um I do like the idea of having it here because it is in the schools and it does bring, you know, I I assume, I would hope it brings, you know, it makes people more comfortable here. Um I think, you know, seeing what we saw tonight with Deep, um those kids, I think, I know, when when Charlotte was in elementary school and she got to go to a middle school, she felt like she was, like, there's that. So there's the sentimental side of it. But that's something I try to keep out of these discussions as well as the emotions and and those types of things. I think, you know, like I, like it's been said, that we've, we're tasked with running business meetings. We are elected, we are essentially, you know, governmental entity, I guess. So and that's where the other municipal meetings are being held. So I do, I do have that um thought in my mind as well. But um yeah, I don't know what anyone else's thoughts are.
Is there a way we could do a survey relatively quickly, you know, some way to go out to whether it's just the school community or the town at large and and say, would, you know, would you be more or less likely to attend school board meetings if they're at the municipal center? Would you feel more or less comfortable speaking at school board meetings if they're at the municipal center and kind of gauge where the community is on this rather than just making this decision?
I just want to highlight that there, there's also the people who are already going to town council meetings and the people who are already engaged in participating in these type of meetings are already going to that facility. So being able to be where those people are, I feel like might actually increase our turnout. Um as well as, there's nothing to say that the same people that came tonight couldn't come um to to that building as well. I have a hard time saying that word, I apologize. Um and I I just think for collaboration's sake of being able to um work hand in hand when when certain things come up where we we can have conversations with people right in the room. Um so I I do agree that I think the year I, the year uh almost gives us a little bit, if we don't like it, we can come back. Um so I don't necessarily have anything against saying just for a year, just because that gives us the leeway of saying, hey, if the community doesn't like it, if the turnout gets worse, if anything that we have the ability to kind of come back easily.
Yeah, that's what I was pretty much gonna say is that this isn't, you know, something that we uh we have to, we are gonna sign a contract for or commit ourselves to a specific uh date. I mean, we go into it indefinitely. And um if at some point in time, it's just overwhelming, this just, there were too many obstacles, it isn't working out, then we bail on it, that's all. I mean, we're, you know, not like we sacrificed this room or any other room and said, well, now we lost it, no, that's not going to be the case. So there's a, I think there's zero risk as far as that's concerned.
The other piece that I struggle with, or, actually, go ahead Brenda, I've already spoken.
That's okay, I just feel like we need to be in our own buildings. Why, why do we need to go to the municipal center? We have our own buildings. If we don't like the sound here that we talked about a couple of weeks ago, we could try hood where they have carpeting on the floor and different ceilings. We've just spent $12,000 and we're just going to say, well, we spent it and now we're just going to move. I don't think that's a good idea either. I think this is where our families know to come and our staff knows to come. I don't think that going to the municipal center is going to bring more parents out. I think they watch us on TV because they're home with their children and, or they're watching a replay. They come when they feel that they need to have something to say, but other than that, they're home watching on TV or they're putting their kids to bed or they're bringing to, bringing them to a meeting and then they're going for ice cream and then they're going to bed, so I prefer to stay in our buildings.
Yeah, the only, the only, I guess, the only other piece, like, I started with struggling is, I would love to kind of have more input from, I guess, the administration. I know we've talked about this, I know, I think, Austin, you said, hey, it's, it's there for us, you know, they're offering to take us. There's, I think, some advantages from a technology standpoint as far as, you know, running the meetings, right, like, we don't have to constantly bring out the red, yellow, green things, or, you know, it's got the screen in the back and, you know, there's, they definitely can, can do that stuff. I'm, I almost think we don't need to make this decision tonight. I'd like to, right, I could, I could, we could table it too, though. We could, we could table this discussion to the next meeting. And that, so that's another option, I think, I think we can, we can figure out the schedule and then we can figure out where we want to hold the meetings, maybe next meeting. I don't, I, yeah, I don't, yeah, that's just my, my, my case. But again, I'm one of seven, so I don't know how the rest of the, rest of the board's feeling. I just, I have a hard time making that or seeing a decision be made tonight with, you know, where we've got some time where we could think about it and it's not a hugely pressing issue of where we, where we hold these meetings until we make that decision, so that's just my thoughts. But if, if that's it, I mean, we can certainly move on with, go ahead, Paul.
I just said one more thing, in terms of perspective. You know, we're in the midst right now of looking at facilities and down the road, none of us will probably be on the board when it happens and I'll probably be dead. But what, I'll give the, the town the credit that, where they had the foresight to build a building that had a meeting room. At some point in time, if we ever have a facility that's for the central office or a school that we're going to use, instead of meeting in a cafeteria with worst acoustics in the world and it sounds like there's a B-52 flying in over us when it comes on, and the whole thing, the cafeteria, yeah, just, it's, it's just bush league. That's my opinion. When we have something like that, when we have a $100 million a year budget, which is significantly more than the town's, and, you know, we, we cobble things together. So I think that whether we meet with the town at the municipal center, whether we meet here, whether we meet at Gilbert H. Hood, whether we meet in a tent outside, it doesn't make any difference. I think that in the future, when we look at building facilities, we need to look at a meeting room for the board and for other, for the committees that we have that are open to the public, and I think it's going to be well-used if we do that. But like I said, I am not going to be around at that time, but things to keep in mind.
Point's well made. Well, I don't, yeah, I guess we'll vote. There was, Kearney seconded it. I'll go around, I'll start on the side, Paul? In favor or not? David?
Yes.
I'm going to vote no. Kearney?
Yes.
Jason? All right, well, the motion passes four to three. We will, how's, how's me, or now, in the 23, 24 year, have meetings at the municipal center? So Austin, I guess, whatever we need to do to make that happen.
I already got a note to check with the town, whether you voted on this, unless you voted just to say, no, we're not going to go there. Check with the town and now that we have this schedule here, and I'll check on March 5th, June 4th and see if there's options for that, for those two situations, because those are the two, only two we have that are not on the 2nd or the 4th.
Okay. All right.
Can I make a suggestion? At least have the June retiree meeting in one of our schools instead of at the municipal center? That June, I had to put my glasses on to read the date.
I think, I think this is for the first, for the July, this doesn't start till July.
This next year.
Oh, I apologize, I didn't hear, I missed that, sorry. Well, that would be another option for both of the meetings on the 1st, if we can't find a date, March for, March, the first meeting in March or the first, first meeting in June.
No, I don't think it's a good idea, and I even don't love making this, this recommendation. I don't think it's a good idea to change where we're going. Either we go there and that's where we go, or we stay here and this is where we stay. I'm only saying that June is a retiree meeting, and it doesn't feel right to me to have people go to the municipal center to celebrate. Our cafeteria staff does a really nice job putting out a spread for them. Where's that going to be at the municipal center? They don't have space in that room to do that. They do have a little ante room, but for the amount of people that come, there won't be enough room. So I'm just making that suggestion, it doesn't have to happen, it's a year away, but I think it is a good suggestion.
I would suggest if we do go down that road, maybe we do that one at Gilbert H. Hood, because as you said, the carpets and, nobody's mentioned it, but air conditioning in the library at Gilbert H. Hood. I know I've been in here sometimes when, without air conditioning in the summer and those type of things, and retirement parties in here when it's been pretty hot. So if we are going to keep the retirement celebration in a school, unless the tech department says, is ripping their hair out and they can't believe I'm asking for this, and it's going to cause all sorts of hassles for them to, to make that kind of a move to Gilbert H. Hood, but my suggestion would be if, if, if we do the town everywhere but keep the retirement celebration in a school, then maybe we look to see if we can do it at Gilbert H.
There's a lot of food involved, though, in the library, so maybe, maybe it needs to be re-thunk, the whole thing.
Right.
The retiree celebration, maybe it's not at a meeting, maybe it's a separate celebration altogether. Because they do a great job here, not that hood wouldn't do a great job, but it's not, the cafeteria isn't near the library.
Right.
Right, if we're meeting in the library, the food is down the hall and down the stairs.
Right.
Right, here, it's right here and it's more convenient for them to do all their work because it is a lot of work to prepare for that. And I really don't like to see it not be part of us, but I also think they deserve to have their celebration in our building.
Do you mind if we get the fiscal advisory on the calendar? Tonight? I'm, I mean, I'd be fine with that.
I would, I mean, I was just thinking July 27th is the same week as the board meeting, so I assume if somebody's going to be at the board meeting in the vacation week, it would probably be, the rest of the week would probably be open, that'd be a Thursday, the 27th.
I am at a conference that week, but you can still have it.
Kathleen is in the process of reaching out to FAC members. She just started that process. I could talk to her and see if she's going to know. She's reaching out to the ones that, you know, are they coming back and that type of thing. So I could have for June 6th, I'm sure she could reach out and find out, do we have openings and of the members that are coming back? And then if we give a date, we might be able to reach out and see if those people are going to be available, because that's the only problem with the summer is you don't know who's taking a vacation and, and all that. What do we, we have about 10 members of SAC approximately, I think.
If they all come back.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, we try to have 10.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a good, let's gauge interest, or not gauge interest, but gauge when people are available, see if we can come to a consensus on maybe a week that works. And then you said by, you think by June 20th we'd be able to have that? You think June 20th we'll be able to have the? June 6th? Okay, perfect. Perfect, so those of us on the board, check your vacation calendars. If you're scheduling anything July? Yeah, you might miss an exciting fiscal advisory committee meeting. All right, we will move on to personnel.
Okay, I have two resignations that I hope you will accept with regret. Stephanie Ducksbury, English Language Arts teacher right here at West Running Brook Middle School. When I was over at Gilbert H. Hood, she was over there as well. She's a long-term teacher and is moving close to home, very close to her home is my understanding, and is going to continue to teach. And Lisa Temple, school psychologist for the district, is moving on.
Do I have a motion to accept the resignations?
Motion to accept with regret and lots of thanks for what they've done for our children.
First from Brenda. Second by Jason, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Here now, motion passes.
And I'm happy to say I have two nomin, uh, three nominations. Tayla Cuomo, special education teacher at Grinnell Elementary School, Lisa Jones, reading specialist, East Erie Memorial Elementary School, and Jamie Zulley, school counselor at Gilbert H. Hood Middle School.
Quick thing, just my understanding, when you calculate the experience levels of people that are hired, does part-time count as a full year?
Kathy Kennedy, human resource director, knows there's a, there's a cutoff. Like, I don't believe it's, I think it's more than a half a year. And I can get that, I, I know she knows it off the top of her head what it is, but she, that's one of the jobs that she does prior to giving the application packet to Kathleen to, to set up an appointment, is looking at all of the years of service and making sure that, most of the times it's full years, but you do get some that, and sometimes they don't, same thing here, that they don't qualify for, for a step if they don't work long enough.
Move to approve as presented.
First by Brenda.
Second.
Second by Kearney, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. And we'll stick with you, Austin, for your update.
I'm keeping my eye on kindergarten enrollment and would like to give an update as of yesterday. The principals updated the projected enrollment, well, they did it across the board, but specifically we were looking at kindergarten yesterday, Monday, May 22nd. Currently, currently, we have 49 openings for kindergarten throughout the school district. I asked Dr. Dancy to look over the past three years to find an average number of kindergarten registrations for each elementary school from when school ends in June and prior to when school begins in August. And it was everything from as much as 15 to only one, depending on the school, which I thought was interesting, but anyways, over the past three years, that number for all schools is approximately, of course, 43. That gives us a cushion right now of six seats, so if we got six more kids to sign up before the end of school, and then we hit our normal average of how many people fill out, sign out, sign up for kindergarten over the summer, we'd be right on target with the numbers. So I just wanted to give you a heads up about that. We will be looking at it and I will continue to give you updates on the kindergarten enrollment. Excuse me, especially once the school year ends. I gave the school board members the New Hampshire School Board Association 2022 resolutions. It was in that sheet that I passed out in non-public, of which I want to point out, the fifth resolution on that list was a Derry Cooperative School District School Board suggestion from last year. The school board asked that the SAU leadership look at this list and make suggestions of other potential resolutions, and we came up with three. If the school board members look on the back of that resolution list, you will see our three suggestions, so you can read along with me. Please remember, these are just suggestions and they are as follows. We used the wording that you folks developed, I think it was Brenda and Erica, maybe, from last year. But New Hampshire School Board Association supports that the state and federal government seek and provide viable, sustainable, permanent funding to meet promised IDA, EAA funding levels. And I think this is something that David has brought up recently as well. I think they talked about it in the legislative session they had. A second one that we thought of was New Hampshire School Board Association supports that the New Hampshire State Government seek and provide additional funding to support public school districts' implementation of special education services at all charter schools. And Laura Powers can jump in if I'm not getting this correctly, but when it comes to charter schools, our students that go to those charter schools, we are responsible to pay the special ed costs for those students, not the charter schools. Am I correct on that, Laura? And then the third one that we came up with is New Hampshire School Board Association supports that the New Hampshire State Government seek and provide an increase in school building aid along with updates to the regulations to account for current educational spacing needs. So I am not expecting the school board to look at these and decide on them. The thought process was, you asked us to come up with some ideas, we came up some ideas. Hopefully you guys will look at them and then maybe at another meeting, you can decide if you want to move forward with any of these whatsoever. I have a sad note, I want to mention, this was actually brought to my attention by former Barker and Grinnell and teacher here, Dan LaFleur, a principal and teacher here, Dan LaFleur, because he worked for this gentleman. But former Derry Cooperative School District administrator, administrator Peter Smurl. I'm saying that name right, thank you, Brenda. Peter Smurl passed away Tuesday, May 9th, at the age of 76. He was an assistant principal at Gilbert H. Hood Middle School, a former principal of both Floyd and Grinnell Elementary School, and one of the things that he was most proud of, like Dan LaFleur opening up Barker Elementary School, Peter Smurl opened up East Erie Elementary School as their principal back in 1986. His priority was always the students striving to give every child the best education possible. Peter was famous for his quick wit, his practical jokes and one-liners, and he retired from the Derry Cooperative School District back in 1998. So I'm glad to hear that he had a good number of years to hopefully enjoy his retirement. Our condolences go out to his family and friends, and I now ask for a moment of silence in remembrance of Peter Smurl. Thank you all. Once again, I want to finish my report with a reminder of all the important dates as we look forward to the three-day Memorial Day weekend. But first of all, let's talk about the importance of Memorial Day, originally known as Decoration Day from the early tradition of decorating graves with flowers, flags, and wreaths, beginning after the the end of the Civil War. We all know this holiday now as Memorial Day, which became an official federal holiday in 1971. It is a day set aside for the remembrance of those who have died in service to our country. Please, once again, let us have a moment of silence for all of our fallen heroes. Now for some more important, end of the 22, 23 school year dates. Um, repetition does not hurt in these situations. Tuesday, June 6th, 6:30 PM at the school board meeting in the West Running Brook Cafeteria, right here, um, two weeks from tonight, we have the Dairy Cooperative School District Retirement Celebration. Thursday, June 8th, at 4:00 PM at the Adams Opera House in downtown Dairy. The next charter school will celebrate its 10th graduation ceremony. Friday, June 9th, yeah, I did that again, didn't I? It's the 7th. It's 10 years, but nobody graduated after their first year at next. I'll get that by the 20th of June. All right. Friday, June 9th, 6:00 PM at the Pinkerton Academy Memorial Field, which you heard about from those fine young ladies, and it's so great to see them. They do grow up and, and become young adults. And, um, uh, the Pinkerton Academy High School graduation ceremony will be up at the, uh, football field. Uh, the following Thursday, June 15th, is the last day of school for grade eight and eighth grade promotion ceremonies in the Pinkerton Academy Hackler Gymnasium with West Running Brook, starting at 3:30 PM, and Gilbert H Hood, starting at 6:00 PM. And the very next day, Friday, June 16th, is Move Up Day for pre-K through, through seventh graders, as well as the last day of school for all other students besides the eighth graders. Please note that this is also an early release day, and I hope everyone enjoys the Memorial Day weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. Anyone have questions or comments for Austin?
Jonathan, can I just add something about Peter Smurl?
Absolutely.
So he was my introduction to the school district. You can thank him for who I am because he taught me to advocate. He told, he taught me what was important for children, and I will credit him with every crazy thing that I come up with and every voice that I use because he absolutely saw me as the person who said, you've been going to school board meetings since that kid was two? Let's talk. And I learned a lot from him and had a lot of respect for him.
Yeah, and Dan LaFleur echoes that. He had a lot to say about him and about him being a mentor. I, uh, of course, him, him retiring in 1998, I never, um, got to meet the man, but, uh, Dan said those same, uh, thoughts about how important he was, uh, Dan being a younger educator at the time and looking up to him and all that, so.
As I reach out, reached out to other parents, even my kids, you know, they, they were really sad. But other parents, when I reached out to them after I, after actually Dan messaged me as well, everybody had such great stories to tell and, you know, they, everybody, but they were all upset too, you know, because he was a good guy and there's a lot of connections there. So they had a lot of good stories.
And I am realizing, uh, as time goes on, and when I look at 76, I still say that's way too young.
All right, um, moving on. I don't see any FYIs, so we'll skip that one and we'll move on to committees. We have the debut of one Kearney on the manifest committee. Don't mess it up.
No pressure.
Throw me a poll there.
I'm gonna mess it up, but all right. Um, so listed below is the manifest, um, being submitted for school board approval. All manifests have been received and approved by at least two school board members, uh, of $1,739,939.24. Motion to approve that?
So.
Oh, okay. Then the general payroll is $1,181,747.86, and then the general expense is $558,191.38. Uh, motion to approve the manifest.
We have a successful first by Kearney.
Hey, look at that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jason. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
I can read large numbers.
All right.
[laughing]
Um, uh, any other committees that have met or would like to speak?
So just going back to our transportation discussion a little while ago. So with all of us in the room here, I'd like to talk about for a second or a couple of minutes is, what do you see the direction in the next, whatever it is, three weeks? What, what do you want to see out of the committee above and beyond what has been done? Um, I, I'll be quite honest. I mean, we looked at it a lot of different ways and we went back to them a lot of different times. And they kinda, you know, as we discussed, they just, they just weren't having it. But I, I'm up for anything. I mean, obviously, I just wanna, I'd like to hear some of you guys' thoughts on how do you want us to approach the next, next meeting and what outcome do you want to see? Obviously, I guess the outcome is we want to counter proposal, us to counter what they have with a better, better, um, financial position for us and service-wise position. But I'd like to hear what you guys think is appropriate and what the expectations are.
I feel like that's exactly why I voted no on it, just because I wanted a little bit more time to be able to kind of look into it and then maybe have a discussion with you, um, about that. I, I don't know if I could necessarily say point by point tonight, but I just wanted a little bit more time because I didn't feel like I was, um, I, I didn't have enough information and I really didn't like what I was seeing. Um, so I, I wanted to look a little bit more into it and ask a few more questions.
I, I kinda stuck, stuck my, uh, my neck out, um, at least in my own, my own assessment of it. That's what I did, um, when I voted the way I did and I spoke the way I did. Because frankly, um, I wouldn't be surprised, uh, based upon the, uh, the meetings that we had and Dave and I were there in them and, uh, that, uh, they wouldn't come back now and say that, well, you didn't sign that, so we're going to increase it and go back to where we started. Um, and if that's the case, then, you know, they've got us up against the wall, the proverbial wall by the throat. Um, and, and, and that's the reality of it. I think that, uh, that's where we are. But I also think that it's important, uh, I think for, for us to, with an expenditure of that magnitude, I think it's important for us to do everything we possibly, possibly can to exhaust, um, the, 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 uh, the probability or possibility that we can maybe, uh, pare that down. And I thought that, uh, is showing the resolve that we, we're showing right now, um, may be, put us in a position of, of perceived strength. Um, and, and that's what I'm hoping for, but I, there, there are no rabbits to pull out of the hat, I'm afraid. I, I, and, and Cliff did a magnificent job, um, in the negotiations. He really did. I, I feel bad for him that it's like, I'm sure he's sitting there going, oh, here we go again. But, um, but, uh, there's, there's no one that didn't do their due diligence in this process. But I, I'm saddened by, by the, uh, the fact that, um, like I said, I think that they're, they're squeezing the, uh, the lemon for all it's worth, so.
To me, it doesn't seem like they value our business. So if we talk about this in a business standpoint, and David, you mentioned the negotiation piece, um, they can look like the hero riding, riding on the white horse when they're starting at 22 or 25% and, and coming down. Um, me personally, and in my opinion, sometimes you have to call people's bluff in a negotiation. And Paul, of course, they could come back and, and say, hey, you know, kick rocks, we're gonna go back to the, the 22. But that type of increase, when you're talking about that spend, is, is pretty unacceptable. And if for nothing else, to make them come back to the table and have the discussion again to say no again, right? And that, I'm not on that committee and that's what I, you know, that's what I would push for. Because even a percent is a pretty big deal. Or at least, I'm not saying they should be reduced, at least help us out in the sense of balancing it, right? That, that to me is the biggest piece, right? I, for, when I speak for myself, I would be okay committing to a longer-term deal if we were guaranteed a little bit more of a consistent spend across the board. Because we get hit, right? We've, we've said it a bunch tonight, but we get hit right out of the gate. And it's tough sledding from there. It's, it's, you know, you're talking over $3 million to almost $5 million in year five.
I would agree with that, by the way.
All right. And that makes sense. And what we can do is Cliff and, and Jane and Austin, when we meet in our next transportation meeting, let's make sure David's there. So we're talking face-to-face with him and not trying to do this through email. And we'll just put it on the table and, and we'll be blunt. And hopefully, maybe we can to come to some new consensus, but if, but at least if we can't, we're looking each other in the eye and we're, we're doing it that way rather than just trying to be, you being our intermediary.
Sure. That was my conversation out in the hallway. It was to get, to get them at the table with us.
So I, I, I guess I'm here, what I'm hearing is, I, I think those are the talking points we'll bring to the meeting. We'll talk about the, the increase and maybe spreading it out or even getting a reduction, whatever the case may be. We'll revisit the, the four or five à la carte items that were added as a result of getting to 16%, which, that's how we got 16%, which is pretty sad.
I'm having a hard time sitting in my seat here over that number. I really am. It's, Paul's making the hot palpitation thing. It's, it's tough one to, something, something's happening to Paul over there and it's not good.
Yeah. I, yeah, I agree. And that's, you know, I, that's kind of, I wasn't the happiest during those meetings going back to December, but you know, it's, it is what it is right now. And we'll try to do, we'll see what we can do with, hopefully, they heard us, him and, uh, David and, uh, Shandra, and we'll see what we can do. And we'll just be a little more direct and, and focused on what we need. We'll go from there.
All right. Um, any other committees that I've met in the past couple of weeks? I don't think so. I don't think so either. All right. Well, at this time, we will invite any delegates and individuals to, oh, hold on.
Just one more plug for, uh, Kearney and I, we're having the, um.
Oh, the listening session. I got that written down.
Okay.
All right. Uh, so now this time, we'll invite, uh, individuals, delegates up to the mic to speak for three minutes. Um, we hope that you respect that and keep it to topics that are germane. Welcome, Richard. Oh, please, well, sorry. I'll say this for everybody. When you come to the mic, please state your name and your address clearly.
I gotta get, I, I, can you hear me now? Uh, well, uh, I only come here tonight because I wanted to listen to your, uh, uh, school board goals presentation. And I was a little saddened to find out there was no presentation. There was just a discussion. Do you actually have the goals written down so that people can, uh, you don't have to answer me, uh, so that people can review them independently? You know, I, I would have, if I'd known that I had to bring my own copy, I would have done that. But unfortunately, uh, I thought that you might use these screens. You know, they are wonderful screens, by the way. Uh, so, uh, so there is a presentation someplace that identifies all the goals that you have?
We, yeah, they are a detachment in tonight's meeting, um, and they will be updated. And I believe we'll be putting them on the school board website, um, once we change some of the wording around, uh, and.
Okay. Well, thank you. That was, uh, I did have something else to say, but, um, I'm not going to. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Oh, Richard, that copy that you got, there just, there might be some immaterial changes on there with a couple of words, but, um, there may be an update to those, the, the physical list that you have tonight. But nothing, I would say, material is changing.
All right. Hopefully I have 30 seconds left. Uh, I won't hold this to you verbatim. How's that?
All right. Um, other business, so, uh, Jason, you just brought this up. May 31st, 6:00 PM at the Dairy Public Library, um, is our first listening session, um, for the next, what? Room A, oh, Room A. Dairy, okay. May 31st, 6 to 7:00 PM, Dairy Public Library, Room A. Um, I will reach out to people, folks in the next couple of weeks and try and set up like a calendar for the next, at least six, maybe, maybe I'll do the whole year. I don't know. Um, so be on the lookout for that. Uh, any other business that people want to bring up tonight?
Um, I did just want to bring up, um, something that I had brought up in non-public, but, um, when we were touring the schools, um, to look at the facilities, it got brought up that the, uh, used lockers were getting disposed of. Um, and I wanted to see what the process could be of, um, using that, that material and recycling it and getting money back for it. Because I know that there's a lot of, um, metal scrap that will pay you for per pound, um, even on like desks and, um, but especially those metal, um, lockers. I think that we could get a decent amount, um, if we're scrapping them anyways. And I just wanted to bring that up to the board and, uh, see what the process would look like to do something like that.
I will actually bring that to Jeremy's attention tomorrow and see if he can research what we can do with those as far as hopefully generating some income with that.
Great.
Thanks for the suggestion.
Anybody else have any other business they'd like to share? Brenda?
Just want to give a shout out to the hood. Um, I don't know, what do they call?
The keynotes.
Keynotes, yeah. I was gonna call them the Huskies and that, I knew that was wrong. Um, the play was great and also congratulations to the West Running Brook Junior National Honor Society, inductees. They, that was a great ceremony as well.
You stole my thunder. It's okay. Um, yeah, no, it's, it's, uh, it's, yeah, it's been, uh, the end of year celebrations are always great. Um, it's great to celebrate, you know, the students. Uh, we had teacher appreciate, or staff appreciation, um, graduations, promotions coming up. Uh, it's great, you know, I, I saw Brenda with Elizabeth there on, on Friday night, the, at the musical, saw Jason there as well. So, um, if, hopefully you guys got, I, actually, David, I saw your son there. Of course, of course, the, oh, see, so like, uh, these, these are great. I, I think we all love, um, celebrating, you know, the great talent that we have in this town, um, the great, you know, yeah, just celeb, continuing to celebrate things. Um, yeah, to anyone that's doing programs at schools, please come invite, or don't even come, send us an email, invite us. We want to attend these things. Um, they're really, they're really great. Uh, and, you know, they keep us connected to, to everyone as well. So, um, yeah. Anyone else have any other business they want? Or are we ready to watch the Celtics get swept? That, that pains me to say. I'm not gonna lie. It pains me. I don't want it to happen, but it's most likely gonna happen. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. First by David. Second by Jason. All in favor? Aye. All right. Have a great evening, everybody. Uh, we all got to sign it? Did you sign it?